Very quick to thank you for being here. Next week is a busy week as our staff, all our employees are working on getting ready for school to start. So, Dr. Barnett, can you talk just a little bit about the Institute and the service we've got going on?
Yeah, we're excited to have the summer closing out here, ready to get back for the new school year. I think we've done some watering work over the summer, made some strides, some progress. We're excited about it, new school year starting. You know, this is what we're worked for, we're working to get back to school. Excuse me. We have 177 days with students each year. That's what we want to have this year. We can have 100 days most of the year, but this year we want to have 177. So, in this time, that 177 days is, if we're going to use those to make a difference. And so, we've got a limited amount of time with our students. So, I'm excited about that. I'm looking forward to having a really good year, doing some good work for our students, doing good things for our community. On Monday, we're going to have our new employee orientation, 8:30 here in this building. Of course, you guys are going to come and be with us for a little bit, AAB, SBO. So, we're excited about that. We're going to have some information about our system and things that they need to know. Now, Tuesday, we're going to have our institute starting at 8:00 to 8:30 will be the registration. We're going to have it at Cobb County Schools College, as I mentioned last time. You know, in the past, we've had the Licee, and we're grateful for a few more things allowing us to use their facility because it is a beautiful place. But we've grown, and it's just got, our factory's got larger, and we could really house our factory, and we never has been able to house all of our employees. And so, this year, we got to talk about it, and we really just wanted to have it at the Schools College, so all of it, because every employee that's in this system has a major hand, an education hire for children. And so, we want to be inclusive for them about it, and I think that's a positive thing, a good thing. So, we wanted to have it there. I went over there yesterday, I thanked Crystal and Brian for helping get it set up. I know we're not exactly finished yet, but we're probably 95% there. We've got a few zones to do. It's really nice, and I think it's going to be a really, really nice place. Following that, we've got some breakout sessions. We've got a great speaker, Mark Brown. I'm really excited about him. I've worked with him, I think he's got a really strong message for our employees. He's going to talk about several things, I don't know, still a stunder and stuff, but I'm really excited about the message he's going to have. And then, we're going to have breakout sessions, two sessions, on the campus of the plane. Everybody has been kind of assigned one session to attend based on their content in their area, and the second is something that they may be, a personal area of growth or development, a professional development, they're interested in choosing. So, I think we've got some good things. Mark Brown has a grid, so once we enter the breakout, so we're going to go visit some of those grids, and then they'll label it more personalized and give you a message. He goes to history, he owns five generations of educators, and he's got a son that's in education now, so he knows education, so I'm excited about that.
What was the time on Monday? The Monday was, did you say, the noon?
Monday is noon. Monday is the new employee, it's at 8:30 in Detroit. The on Tuesday for the institute is from 8:00 to 8:30 is the registration, people will be signing in, 8:30 until about 10:30, 10:25 actually is when we've got our institute part. Then, we break out by 10:45, 5:00 until an hour and a half, till around noon, we'll have that first breakout session, and we'll come back after lunch and give you a play by session. We've got some other trains, Transportation has some trains on the third, train on the third, and Special Ed has some trains, and other stuff, but that's the biggest part. So, we're really excited about that, excited to welcome back all of our employees. Nick?
Yeah, yeah, we've got a treat, I think, today, so...
We've got a young lady, McKenna Lambert, who's with us here. Her mother's an employee of ours, which McKenna went and competed at the Bay of Competition, National Bay of Competition. If I'm not mistaken, I believe there were 50 competitors that she competed against in place four in the nation. Is that correct? That's right, that's correct.
Yeah.
That's impressive, that is very impressive. Well, we talked to her, her mom, and we've asked her, and she's agreed, to come up here and just share her seats that she presented there for. So, we asked her if she was there, and she said, "No, the..." She said she had worse allergies.
What are you going to say?
Well, you've got some awards there, you want to show us? These right here are her awards that she received, the Bay, this is the National Bay. Well, this is nice, this looks nice on you all. This right here is a state official runner-up for speech official, and that is really, really nice. Which way is down, too? I'm going to let you turn around and space the audience, and we're going to come down, and we're going to say, "We can sit here," about that. You want me to go on this side? You on mic? You on mic? All right, baby, we can go. We can hold this. You make it easy on us.
Helen Keller is one of my personal heroes because she went above and beyond to overcome her own disabilities and become a world famous activist for other disabled people. Helen Keller was born with the ability to see and hear, but at 19 months old, she contracted scarlet fever, which left her both blind and deaf. Because of that, she had to learn to talk using sign language and touch. Helen overcame many obstacles and was the first blind and deaf person to graduate with a bachelor's degree. I also want to rise above and beyond to become a better person and a better beta. I will use the word "above" to help you understand how we can all do this. First, you have to have a good attitude. Attitude is the little things that can make a big difference. If you have a good attitude, you can overcome anything. Attitude determines altitude. Second, you have to believe in yourself and in someone higher that can do all things. The Bible says, "I can do all things through Christ who strengthens me." Third, you must take opportunities and go with them. Not only should we take the opportunity to be kind to others in unexpected ways, we should also help ourselves by going beyond what is expected to achieve our goals. Next, we must vow to make a difference in the lives of others. In doing for others, it makes us a better person. Last, we must eliminate negativity. We hear many people talking badly about our nation and our world, but I am ready to be the positive. If you have a good attitude, believe in yourself, look for most of opportunities, vow to go beyond the unexpected, and to eliminate the negativity, you will go above and beyond to become better people and better betas, better betas. I am ready, are you?
Actually, we got these plaques, so we're going to get a picture made of McKenna. McKenna, that was fantastic. If you'll carry that life lesson with you through life, I think grand things are in store for you.
It's a generous unit if you like it.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
All right. Hey, thank you so much. All the problems this bit from reminding ourselves of litigation, that's really good, that's really good.
Great job, thank you for, thank you for being here. We, we, uh...
Just a little bit, yeah.
Are we hiding that?
You were hiding that.
I came across a organization a couple of years ago, Education Planners, that does system-wide planning, and we've been looking for it, and get them forward. We have with us Mr. Daniel Wilson, who is with us, going to do a presentation to us, talk to us about what they do, what, what they do, and what else. Mr. Wilson, if you would, turn right ahead, please. That's fine, yes, sir.
It just seems like to me that every time I get in front of the board, which is somewhat often, I follow a gifted speaker. I'm going to do my best today, but no promises that I can anywhere come close to winning.
I have to apologize for the place that I put this.
Mr. Chairman, Superintendent, and Board Members, it is a pleasure to be with you tonight, and I do have a handout, if it pleases the Board, and I'll do that. As Mr. Williams stated in his introduction, we have been speaking for some time, and Education Planners is a company that I founded in 2009, after I retired from the Superintendency. I spent 35 years in education, anywhere from a teacher, and then worked my way through the system superintendent in Cobb County Schools in Marion, Georgia, retired, and then was called back about eight months later to Fulton County Schools to be their interim superintendent, where I stayed for four years. So, I enjoyed that opportunity of 35 years of serving students and serving the people of my communities, and then when I retired for the second time, I wasn't ready to quit, I was ready to slow down a little bit. So, I founded this company called Education Planners, and we do a great deal of facility assessment work. And the people that I have with me are the same format of retired educators in their early 50s, late 50s, or early 60s, that still have a little bit to give, and we've been all over the southeast for the last eight years or so, in close to 100 different school districts in Mississippi, Alabama, and of course, Georgia. So, the proposal that I shared with Superintendent and the Board Chair a few months ago was an opportunity for you to be able to have a real assessment of your schools. We do a lot of these because as you plan for your future, one, it's good to know what your economic, demographic forecast is going to be, what type of student, number of students that you may or may not have, but also can your facilities accommodate those students? Are your facilities aging where you need to replace them? Are they aging to the point where you need to improve them, maintenance and facility upgrades? So, what we do is a, is a really several tasks, and the first one is, you can see on the, on really the second page after the cover letter, we do enrollment forecasting. And what that is, we look at all the methodology data that allows us to determine the number of students potentially you will have in your district over the next 10 years, and that is developed and provided and updated yearly. The second task is really a capacity analysis and a utilization evaluation. And the importance of that, over the years as programs change, a facility that may have been able to accommodate a particular program five years ago, maybe the program has been expanded, or maybe the programs have changed, of course, offerings have changed, and do you need to upgrade your facilities to accommodate that? So, we do a walkthrough of all your schools to determine if your facilities are adequate, or do they need some upgrading, and we make those type of recommendations. And then, as you'll see on the third task, which is really the most important one, because it allows you to have a master plan. And when you go search as a board, and as a superintendent, and as a community, or maybe funds, or needs to do things, it's really good if you know what you're going to need to do. So, that's what we do for you. We give you a master plan. A master plan that acknowledges the assessment of all of your facilities, including the location, the age, the condition of the facility, the square footage, the parking, the capacity, and so on, so you'll be able to make good decisions in your future. We love doing this. The three people that I have that's associated with this project, and I may include a fourth if you choose to allow us to participate with you, is Dr. Steve Salmon, and Mr. Salmon is the one who has really been in Alabama a good bit of his time. He's probably done 40 or more of these just in the state of Alabama. So, he's an old guy, but he's very good, he continues to get the calls, and we do this as a service and something that we really enjoy doing. So, you can see that Steve has been in multiple school districts, and we didn't choose to list them all, but just to give you a few of the places that he's been and we've been together. The next page is Bob Flowers, he is our architect, and Bill Winchester is another person that works with us, who actually doesn't live too far from here. He's an engineer, he's a graduate of Vanderbilt, and he also works with us on these projects. And then, you can see the last person is myself, and even though mine is more of an education background, when I was the deputy superintendent for about eight years in Cobb School District, I did all of this type of facility stuff, and of course, Georgia has something that I wish Alabama had, and I'm sure you wish it had too, you had too, and that is a SLOSS, which is a 1% sales tax. So, I'm currently managing the Cobb SLOSS program, and it's an $800 million program over five years. During my superintendency in Fulton in 2007, we put that program together, and it was a $932 million program over a five-year period of time. So, we've had good, and always I share that with you, is we've had good experiences on doing this and making sure that from the smallest district to the largest, to the largest districts, you have an opportunity to keep your facilities upgraded and make sure that your community is aware that you care about facilities and that you're on top of that. And it's just like your house. I had to put a roof on my house about two years ago because the roof was 22 years old. I didn't want to put a roof on there, but I had to, and I watched it all the way through, I let it live as long as it could, and then I was ready to repair it. So, we do a lot of the same type of things. I've given you a few of my references here, we can provide you with many references, because like I said, we do this and do this a lot, and it is a great opportunity for us to be around good people and get to meet young ladies like was here earlier, because that just kind of makes everyone's day. So, if you have questions, I'll be glad...
Sure, the Board, have any students you have?
We had 110,000 when I was there, and a little over 90,000 in Fulton. And Fulton is north and south of the city of Atlanta, so we... I never could get used to everyone calling it North County and South County, because we were truly separated by Atlanta City. It was a great time.
We left half for questions, so we have questions as of this point.
I just want to know, this is something we've talked about for some time, this long-term type of capital planning, and I guess that is a part of all this, and so, I'm thankful that you're getting to play with it a little bit.
What, as far as once we put, once you, if we do this, develop a plan, how often does it get updated, and how's that process work?
The demographic part, Steve likes to update every year. And sometimes it doesn't show anything, but sometimes it shows some real changes. So, he likes to do that every year. We would recommend that you allow us to update this every year. And usually, we come back and give the updates for little or nothing or nothing, because it just, and there's several reasons for that. If you take us and we bring you this plan, you're not going to do it the very next day, so you're going to do it over time, and we don't want our facility plan, our master plan that we give to you, three years down the road, to be outdated. So, we always say to districts that we come back, I do Cobbs, and I can go every year in front of the Board to give them an update on the facility, and it's just important that we stay with you. It's not a cost thing, it's just, we keep it updated.
Can they have state funding, or are we just, is it on our own, if we decide to do something?
I'm not sure I heard the whole thing.
Oh, so you, can y'all have a state grants or state funding, or any of those things, or the district, we love the money?
We would like the opportunity to try to get you state funding. We do a lot of that in Georgia. Georgia has what's called a five-year plan, that you update every year, and you make application for, and this usually comes under that umbrella. I spoke with some folks in Alabama to kind of check that out just a couple of days ago. It may be a little more difficult here, but we would love to work with you to try to get the state to pay for this. It benefits the state, it benefits you to stay updated on your facilities. I have folks that I didn't mention here that do write grants and pursue grants. Grant funding in today's time, it's kind of rebounding, but grant funding is not something that's easily accessible, even though I do have a grants person. Clean '09 and '14 grants kind of went...
We certainly appreciate your time and willingness to come out here and share with us.
It's my pleasure, my pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes, sir.
Mr. Ratch, if you'd like to come and update us a little bit on the new buses and some of the transportation things that we've got going on there.
All right. We're really excited this year to add 12 new buses to the fleet. We have 11 Thomas-built buses that are, we just received the invoice for today, and our goal is to have them run the first day of school. We're up against a pretty tight window, but everybody at Thomas and the state inspectors trying to work with us to get those on the road. We have 10 72-passenger buses and 1 54-passenger bus out of those 11 purchased from Thomas. The 54-passenger bus will be assigned to a, I believe it's an Otter School District, it goes off Deerhead Cove, a lot of tight turns, a shorter bus is better equipped to handle that, so we're going to assign the 54-passenger bus to that route. We have one special needs bus that's wheelchair-equipped, wheelchair lift-equipped that'll be coming in, it's an international bus. That bus is valued at about $85,000, and the other buses are somewhere in the neighborhood of $750,000. So, we're really thankful that we get to add these buses to the fleet, and as they add, we rotate the older ones off, but we're going to add, we're going to retain three extra spare buses this year because of all the extra trips. We have more extracurricular activities now than we've ever had, we're adding teams, different trips are being added, so we're going to, we're going to keep three extra spares. The state allows us to keep 20% of our regular route buses as spares, so we have 120 routes, so that would be 24 spare buses. So, we're right at, we're maxed out, and we keep 24 buses as spares, and that's our plan to do this year. We're working on an option to replace the mobile phones. We, right now, we have, we're working with a consultant from Fountain Direct Communications to do a propagation study to see how effective digital mobile radios will be. He's working with three sites, P Ridge, Savannah Gap, and Geraldine Towers that are located in those areas, to see what kind of coverage we could get out of 40-watt digital mobile radios. These radios will come with GPS tracking, so we would be allowed to, you know, if Dr. Barnett wanted to be in his office and we had a question about where bus 1010 was, and we could pull it up, and if it's running its route, we have real-time live feed of where that bus is at over a digital mobile radio device. We're not on a network, we're not, we're not on AT and T or Verizon. It's our equipment, it's been purchased one time, and we're not paying a fee for that. And we get to use that GPS over the lifetime of that, of that radio. So, that's something we're checking into, we want to bring a report back to the Board at a later time. And then, we are going through state inspection right now. We have, Jeff Duke is on our lot, working through those 142 buses, and so we're hoping to get the state inspection done, and what that allows, hopefully, we'll have all our buses ready, and the drivers can pick them up after in-service, and then they won't have to be inspected again in August. So, the drivers won't have to bring them back in August if they get inspected before the start of school. So, we're really thankful to Jeff from the state's helping us out with that, and hope that's, hope the drivers really appreciate that too, because they won't have to come back to the shop in August. But that's just a little bit of an update from Transportation. Do you guys have any questions?
How's the, I guess, bus rods, sort of, how's, how's the plant and all that kind of...
Dr. Barnett and I talked about that this week. It looks like the, there needed to be some core sampling done on the property. The rain has kind of delayed that. Industrial Board officials have talked with Dr. Barnett and said that they still feel like that we're within the window of opportunity to get that built. We had hoped to be ready to move maybe by spring break. It looks like the majority of the transition will take place in June, which is probably best for us anyway. We'll get buses off the road, and then we can, we can transport all the parts room and everything that has to be in a season when buses are not traveling the roads daily. So, that part will work out pretty good, as long as we can meet that window and start moving by June.
What's our time looking at, what are we into, 7:30, 8:00, month of the 18th?
Well, yeah, we've got basically 10 months, yeah, pretty much. We're, this, the seven months, we've just completed the seventh month of a 18-month contract, so we're really at a level, so...
Can you give me one concrete, please?
Well, they're, they're working on it, and I do know that, I talked to Chairman of the Industrial Board this week, and he's been in contact with architects and all those folks, so this is, the rain being slowed down a little bit, but they're, they're moving.
Do you want to talk about the in-service next week on the third?
Sure. I sent you out an email today, a little bit of an update. That'll be at the Civic Center at 8:00, we'll start. There's an agenda attached to that email I sent to you, and we're so proud, I really appreciate everybody working together to cover the cost of that meal. It's something we like to do for drivers to promote camaraderie and a little bit of sense of family across the county, so make sure, make plans if you can to be there about about 11:30. But in that in-service meeting, we'll go over the latest safety regulations, we'll go over monthly inspections, all the processes that need to take place in order to continue to operate a safe fleet of buses, but that will be Thursday at 8:00, when we start, and then we'll try to be moving toward the meal by about 11:30.
Is that where you're going?
I'll be there around 3:00. I'll come in right there. Sir, you want to talk about what Idris...
Just a couple items. Idris, open house, we invite all of you guys, once again, we talked about last month, we invite you to spend Idris open house, July 30th, to the Board, Idris, particularly doing a good job of promoting. We've got a lot of work going on up there, Mr. Lyles, and they've been doing a good job, like campuses, a lot of beautification, park issues that are going on, so it's looking really nice. We're also, one major, just coincidence of times, we're fortunate enough that we've got Natural Gas, running that school now, so that'll be much more cost-efficient, much more energy-efficient, and just on the land, so that's a little part. I believe they were actually switching out all the stuff, we're wondering today if they have that switched over, so that's really, they do some kind of adjustments there, as we're doing that. It's really looking nice inside the elements, it's touched up painting, drops in, flower beds, mulch out front, just a lot of really good work going on. It looks really nice. So, I encourage you, if you can, to go up there and get a little night, buddy.
One thing, I know a lot of folks up in that community, it's really exciting, Mr. Lyles coming to this, and they're excited to, you can just tell, it's warm, it's pleasant up there, and it's going to be great.
Yeah, well, I'm excited, I'm really excited to be here. So, really, back in July, or June, I think it's June, you gave me the approval of any purchase that agreement. Brian's been in contact with the attorney this week, it's kind of taken us, there's been, it's just been some hurdles that typically we don't have in this kind of stuff, but we did, we did know, now we know the product, the survey, they're waiting to set a closing date, which we anticipate to be real soon. We already set a date that all parties can get together and sign that, so maybe this year, hopefully in the next week or so. Really hoping to get that done, so, just one update on that. Our hearing that year, 20, Friday, I think that's about what I have for the work section.
Yeah, I think that we talked about that.
Thank you. We wanted to...
Thank you. Uh, we wanted to thank you for including us in New Employee Orientation, because that is a, a, a big recruitment time for us, and we appreciate the, the window that we have for that. Uh, thank you for the PD options. That was, that's new. And I may be the only person in the county that liked it, but I can pick what I wanted to go to.
I got one at all.
There you go. Yeah, we've got one, but, you know. I can pick what I, what I'm interested in instead of something else, so I, I appreciated that. And thank you for the, the three days in the classroom. That's, uh, something we had talked about earlier that we just, we need. In the past, we've had a day and a half, or we would have meetings like Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. You can get in your classroom Thursday, and you have parents at five o'clock that night. So a lot of people were having to work not officially on the clock, and so I'm excited about that. And I know a lot of other people I have talked to. They're, they love that, so, uh... And y'all were talking about Ider. I've heard a lot of, of positive about Ider, so, uh, I'm looking forward to working with Ider this year. Uh, and what else? I'm cheating with my mind. Uh, when we met earlier this summer, some of the things that we discussed have, have been taken care of. So I, I appreciate that. I appreciate you listened to my concerns, and we, we worked on it. So we got a full year to, to continue working together and getting some things resolved. So once school gets started and we get wine, or that's when we, well, you know, we'll have a lot of concerns after our meeting, so I'd like to ask you that again.
Sure.
And anybody else is welcome to come, but, uh, thank you for the opportunities to.
Well, I, I'm excited about this schedule. I think it was important to us to try to get as much code in, in, in a succinct amount of time and give folks the opportunity to get back to their school, do some things, and then, and then. So that, that was important.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you for including us in the New Employee Orientation. I have had numerous questions. I've had eleven calls today. And I talked to Mr. Barnett yesterday for a short while about us being required to go to the meeting Monday and support people. He's never even been invited to it before. And this year, you know, we get a notice that it is a requirement. And today I've had, out of eleven calls, I've had six that said, "Okay, what if I don't go? What are they gonna do to me?" So that's a big concern, you know. If, we've never went before. We've told this week that we were required to go, and they really know, if they don't go, what's gonna happen.
Well, you know, you're, you have contracts, you made it today. We're gonna transport students a hundred and seventy-seven days, and you're transporting students less. So it's a, it's a contract day. That, that's the way we look at it. It's a contract day, so you're compensated for it, uh, it's part of that, uh, part of that employment contract. And that's kinda, you know, uh, we, you know, I mean, I, I, the idea was not refuted by nature. Uh, in fact, I mean, I, I was hoping that people would be encouraged, that we wanted them there and invited to attend and be present and not upset about being invited or, or whatever. You know, I, that's a little bit disheartening.
We just want to get everybody together in one place, like we.
Well, a few of them are happy with it, you know. Like, like I told you when I talked to you yesterday, we've never even been invited. But, you know, someone's, some of them didn't even know it until they got the text message. And there's, well, you know, "Just don't tell us nothing. What? What are we gonna do? Why are we there?" And, you know, I can understand that thoroughly also.
You're saying they'd just be better if they came?
Well, I, you know, it's, it's, it's a contract day, and, and of course, I mean, you know, I mean, we, we really encourage them to be there, and we want them to be there. I mean, if they choose not to attend that day, I mean, I guess they could use a personal day or, or whatever they chose, but if we, we send it to them, a, a contract employment day.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we'll talk back to them.
Okay.
You gonna feed everybody? I'm not giving a little incentive. It's like a hundred and nothing. Get that going.
No, that's not clear.
Back to the, one other thing I have before we take a short break here, back to the long-term planning. Uh, I think we've got another organization that's probably maybe next four weeks or something that's gonna come and speak to us about the same, same topic, give us something that we may prepare and talk about. But I, I, I think long-range planning is extremely important. Uh, and, and, and saying this upfront, just because you get the, the comprehensive evaluation that recommends what you should do. There's no obligation that you have to do, obviously, so... But, but that's something I think we need to, we need to strongly consider, because it kinda gives us a roadmap, it gives us an idea. But it's very important we do it in a work, kinda, plan down the road, sure, but you won't end up high one. Yeah, very important. So that's, anyway, we're, we're gonna talk some more about that in, in future workshops. Anything, anything you guys have to think of before taking a short break?
I think, uh, what we talked about this Jolene property, if y'all have a mind, maybe kinda what we talked about, did that about the Hennecker. Apparently, there's, there's some property, as you, as you pull into the, or pulling out from the Hennecker property, there is a property, I think on the other side of the road, there's a little bit of that that corners, that's somehow on the Hennecker, uh, school property, and they can't close their, their loan or whatever. So he said, I think it's maybe a quarter of an acre, but I don't, I don't know if it's in the road. I'm not sure exactly where the property ran, is that there? But he said that he, that first was moved back. We're compensated for whatever the value was on that. So if y'all could get in touch with Derek Wizman, with the, uh, first that backed.
Just touch base with him. I'll be out there with Mr. Grant and take a look. Okay, in case you wanna talk about him.
You have that map that I...
Yeah, we have that back in the studio.
All right, let's take a minute. We'll get started.